This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council, and I am calling this regular town council meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 14th, and it is currently 7:02 PM. Mr. Wood, if you could.
Heavenly Father, again, we have come before you seeking your wisdom and your guidance since we go about the business of this, your town. We ask that we would be of one heart and one mind, and we would honor you and honor those who we serve. We pray this in your holy and precious name. Amen.
For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance. We will now move on to item 5A, Adoption of Minutes of Previous Meetings, Special Town Council Meeting, January 3rd, 2023, and 5B, Regular Town Council Meeting, January 10th, 2023. Can I get a motion to adopt these?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Brandelsky, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion or Corrections.
Seeing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is 6A, Presentations, Proclamations, and Declarations. Killenly Parks and Rec Volunteer of the Year Award. Ms. Wakefield would actually like to...
Yes.
Read the proclamation.
Killenly Parks and Recreation, Proclamation Honoring the 2022 Volunteer of the Year. Whereas the Killenly Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of our community, while Scott DeRozia has run many seasons of Killenly Youth Basketball Programs as a per diem staff member, Scott took a different role for the 21-22 Youth Hoop Season. Scott moved to a complete voluntary role in assisting the department to organize, referee, provide coaching assistance to the many volunteer coaches. Scott contributed more than 80-plus volunteer hours to the Killenly Youth Basketball Program during a very challenging basketball season. Whereas the youth hoop would not be possible without the tremendous number of volunteer coaches and individuals like Scott DeRozia, Scott's youth programs' expertise has a tremendous impact on the positive experiences for our volunteer coaches, players, parents, seasonal personnel. Scott leads with example and is quick to help coordinate, officiate, facilitate within the program. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Killenly, recognizing Scott DeRozia as a recipient of the 2022 Volunteer of the Year Award for the Killenly Parks and Recreation Department, be it further proclaimed that the Killenly Town Council urges all citizens to see how they can help their community by volunteering their time and knowledge. Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this 14th day of February, 2023.
Good afternoon, Council. I just want to take an opportunity to thank Scott for his many, many years of service, not only for our community, but for the staff at Killenly Parks and Recreation. Without Scott's knowledge and expertise, the level of programming that we have would not be possible. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes time and energy that Scott has put into our program, sometimes in a paid position and sometimes in a completely non-paid position, and it wasn't any more evident than the 21-22 timeframe. Scott had stepped away from our program, came back in a volunteer role, and during a pandemic, of all things, volunteering is time to jump in and help us with coaching, helping us with putting the teams together, and I just want to say thank you so much for what you do for this community, and if you want to say anything really quick, I'll give you the mic.
I love having a microphone. I promise not to sing. But anyway, I just want to say that, you know, for what I've been able to do in my life working with young kids, and I get probably more out of it than they do, but with the Killenly Parks and Recreation Department, they've been absolutely fantastic with letting me, you know, fill my dreams, letting me do things the way that I believe they should be done, and they have been giving me the freedom to do that, and without their help and everyday assistance, and then we must have passed along maybe 30 or 40 emails a day back and forth with everybody in the staff there. Just a wonderful organization, and it goes back to my dad working with the Killenly Parks and Rec Department, which he did, and that family that it has always been. So I just want to thank you all and thank the Killenly Parks and Recreation Department.
I just want to say really quick that I think the Town of Killenly should be proud. We are very blessed to have an individual like Scott who has been in this community his entire life and has really dedicated himself to the youths of Killenly, and it's quite evident, like I said, I've been here, I was in the department in the 90s, and Scott was a huge mentor to me, even in the professional field, in teaching me, whether it was in coaching or just in my profession, and because of him, I'm probably back here now, and it's just awesome to see an individual who's done so much for the community, and I think the Town of Killenly should be proud of him and blessed that we have him, and we hope that he continues for a long time to come. So, thank you, guys.
On behalf of the entire council, I would like to thank you. It's rare that we find people who are willing to give to the community and volunteer so much of themselves. It takes away a lot from your own time, and it's a dedicated service, and we appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 6B, Proclamation Recognizing the Week of February 18th through the 25th as National FFA Week, and Ms. Wakefield wanted to read this as well.
As my children, two of my children graduated from the Ag Ed program, I have a little soft spot for FFA, so. Proclamation Recognizing National FFA Week, February 18th through the 25th, 2023. Whereas the FFA and agriculture education programs provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of the food, fiber, and natural resource systems, and whereas FFA promotes a positive difference in the lives of students by developing their potential for premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members, and whereas agriculture education in FFA ensures a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs, science, business, and technology of agriculture, and whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve", gives direction of purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agriculture education, and whereas FFA promotes volunteerism, citizenship, patriotism, and cooperation, and now therefore be it proclaimed by the Killenly Town Council that the week of February 18th through the 25th, 2023 be recognized as FFA Week, Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, the 14th day of February, 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Wakefield. Next item up is 6C.
Do you have the red folder?
Thank you.
with us. The National FFA Organization helps recognize and develop student leadership roles. Through agriculture education, our chapter is committed to providing all students with a path to achievement in premier leadership, personal growth, and career success. Within the Killenly FFA Program, students have many opportunities to develop skills and explore their interests in a broad range of agriculture pathways, whether those interests are in farming, becoming a veterinarian, a horticulturist, a mechanic, a scientist, or an entrepreneur, among many more options. Thank you for recognizing the importance of agriculture in our daily lives and the value of the leadership skills our students are developing through the National FFA Organization.
Now we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 6C.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the next two items are supposed to be for February of 2023, so when you go through the agenda. We're making that correction, but the actual proclamations do list February 2023.
Okay. Yep. So, there is a correction. If anyone is looking at our agenda, the proclamations say February of 2022, they're actually for February of 2023. Item 6C is a proclamation recognizing the month of February 2023 as Black History Month in the Town of Killenly. Whereas Black History Month is observed annually across the United States in February, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter Goodwin-Woodson, a noted historian and author, second African-American to earn a PhD from Harvard University, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, which was later renamed the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week on February 12th, 1926, and for many years, the second week of February, chosen to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, has been celebrated by African-Americans in the United States. And whereas in 1976, President Gerald Ford officially declared Black History Month as part of the nation's bicentennial Black History Week, was expanded and became established as Black History Month, and is now celebrated all across North America. And now therefore, the Killenly Town Council does hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Black History Month, which is a time for honoring the significant achievements, inspirations, and contributions African-Americans have made to our town, state, and nation. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this 14th day of February, 2023. Next on the agenda is item 6D, Proclamation Recognizing the Month of February 2023 as Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month in the Town of Killenly. Whereas Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month is a national effort to raise awareness about the abuse in teen and young adult relationships and promotes programs to prevent this abuse during the month of February. And whereas teen dating violence is a widespread problem affecting youth in every community across the nation, and whereas one in three young people are affected by physical, sexual, or verbal dating violence, one in 10 in a serious relationship have reported being slapped, pushed, hit, threatened, or coerced by their partner, and recognizing breakups are a time of greater risk even when a relationship was never physically abusive. And whereas young people can choose better relationships when they understand that healthy relationships are based on respect and learn to identify early warning signs of an abusive relationship. And whereas elimination of dating violence must be achieved through cooperation of individuals, organizations, and communities, and young people across the nation have organized to put a stop to dating abuse and work alongside their adult allies to educate young people about this violence. And whereas Dating Violence Prevention Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn about preventing dating violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore, the Killenly Town Council does hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month in the Town of Killenly. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this 14th day of February, 2023. Next item up on the agenda is unfinished business for town meeting action, and we have none, so we'll move on to item 8, Citizen Statements and Petitions. Ms. Clorio, did we have anything submitted?
We did not receive any.
Thank you. At this time, if anyone would like to speak, please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Donna Bronwell here from Bailey Hill up in East Killenly and chaired conservation for at least 20 years. Couple things, good to be here, I haven't been here in a little while. Some things that are happening with the Conservation Commission, next month at the council meeting here, we'll present our environmental award. Another thing we're doing is the Last Green Valley has established a spring outdoors time that is similar to the Walktober, where they have the whole month that there are all kinds of activities around the town. They're also doing that in spring outdoors, so highlighting events from March to June, and they're going to actually present, make a brochure, printed brochure for the spring. They never did that before, it used to be just online, but this year they're doing it with a printed brochure. So, what we've done is, they said, well gee, we should do some walks and things like that for conservation, and in light of that, some of the, we have a number of new people on conservation. Thank you, God. We only have one. It's been a while, I'll tell you, it's been a while. We do still have one alternate position open, so if anybody hears, talks about conservation environment, all that good stuff, send them our way. We always welcome everybody. That's great. But a number of our new people, as we talk about these are various properties that we have, somebody, someone said, well, I've heard of that, but I don't know where it is, and so anyhow, we organized a special meeting on a Saturday and got a bus from the town and a driver, and we went around to a lot of our properties, and people said, oh, this is where that is, oh, I see what you mean, and all that kind of stuff. So it was a kind of a tour around on Saturday morning to show people on the commission, you know, where our properties were, some of them are not familiar. So that was a good thing. As a result of that, we decided to have for this Last Green Valley Spring Outdoors time from March to June, to do four walks at our various properties, and we'll probably do one bus tour also. We've got to affirm that tomorrow night, but that's probably what's going to happen. So we're back on track, going to be highlighting our great places in town. So, we still have one opening, and our meeting is tomorrow night. Everybody's welcome, we're always open to visitors, anybody. We have fun. So, that's my story.
Thank you, Donna. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing no further public comment, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is council and staff comments.
I was just wondering when we were going to have the economic development discussion again that was on, like, will that be on the agenda again? In terms of, so what I was thinking when I heard that is that it seems like the benefit of the large grant that they're going for is for the entire town, not just for the wastewater plant. So, why would the wastewater be plant doing, be doing the entirety of the funding for it? Anyways, it may not be a discussion for tonight, you know, the $60,000 feasibility study, but when will that be on again?
So, the WPCA will be evaluating, funding the feasibility study at their upcoming meeting, which I believe is next week, because I think they're, they might have some revised numbers for that, so I don't know that it's $60,000 anymore, it might be at a revised number. So the WPCA would look to fund that out of their, out of their capital project funding.
It seemed like, to me, it seemed like a town initiative, what did you call it, a three towns initiative to get the grant, so it's not just the WPCA.
So typically, the, because the wastewater treatment plant is fully funded by user rates, all capital projects are also funded by those user rates, and so that's where the WPCA funds all their capital projects, unless the town decides to participate in a larger capital investment in the, in the project. But typically, the, for studies like that, that's usually handled by the WPCA, because it is specifically, it's an enterprise fund, so it's funded entirely by the user rates.
To get the large grant, and so they're going to get all of the grant, and the town doesn't get any of that grant then?
Correct. Right, so it goes strictly to the plant.
That's their benefit then, is they get the whole grant.
It's the plant, right.
And is that joint with the housing grant?
No.
So totally separate?
Completely separate.
Okay.
All right. Two separate, complete things.
Yeah, I was unclear about their incentive to do, fund that entire thing, thinking it seemed like coming from the town, but no, if they're getting the whole grant, if they get the whole grant.
Correct.
That's their incentive, so.
Yeah, two complete, separate things.
So Mary, is that a potential increase for their customers or no? If they're funding that, or is it already in their funding?
They have capital, they have capital funding that they already have, they're looking to get authorization to use that capital money that they already have for that purpose, so it's not...
So it would go towards that feasibility study?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
WPCA, you have your joint meeting with WPCA next month.
Any further comments? Mr. Wood?
Just real quick on what Ms. Bronwell said, you know, I'm just more excited to see how, you know, having now come out of COVID, how well you guys are doing, and also, we're more than happy to try to recruit people as much as we can for you. I know I bring that up every, every time we have a town committee meeting there for the Republicans, and I'm sure the Democrats, they do the same thing, so, and all of us know a lot of people in town, so we're doing our best. We'll keep trying for you, Donna.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Ms. Brandelsky. No comments? We're not letting you off that easy. All right, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 10, Appointments to Boards and Commissions, and we had none this month. Moving on further, next item up is 11A, Board of Educational Liaison. Mr. Napper out.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, it's been a little while, but anyways, I'll just give you an update on the last meeting, and a few other things were going on. This past meeting did some basic housekeeping, and then there was discussing, discussion on school facilities requests, so when other outside entities request to use the gyms or the auditorium and such, we're going to review those processes and what's involved, because I guess there was a bit of an overflow at one event and at the central office, and there were not many people at the gymnasium event up at the high school, so we're going to look at the policies and so forth that that process is, and they've been there for a little while, so we're going to revisit them. On the superintendent's update last week, there were a couple of administrator vacancies. The principal at the high school, we have an interim at the time, and so we're interviewing or taking applications for permanent replacement there, and then there was an assistant for the pupil services director on the administrative side. On facilities for the projects we're working on right now, some HVAC systems we're working on with the town as far as getting some funding, also working with the town on engineering services, just trying to streamline things for that, and then the water system at the high school is, they're looking for a new operator for the water system, running the high school water system right now, so I believe that walkthrough is this week, and then bids are due, and so that, that's in the works right now. We also had a discussion, and we approved a SIC bank request for a staff member that's going to be out for an extended period. We are in full budget swing mode right now, our next meeting is tomorrow evening, 6:15 at Central Office. I believe most of the budget meetings are going to be at the Central Office location, not here, and they're all scheduled for 6:15 at this point, it's every other week, and then our regular meetings are every other week. We are also interviewing for ASO positions. We've had three interviewees so far, I believe, is that correct, Ms. Clorio?
We've had, we've had two interviewees, we have, we've had another applicant submitted, we've reposted the position in a number of additional outlets. Again, we initially posted that position, those positions, I should say, right before Christmas, so it's really not surprising that we didn't see a lot of submittals right at that Christmas timeframe, so we've, you know, kind of recast the net again, so we have two in the hiring process right now.
Yeah, we're excited to see that process is moving forward, so. And that was it for this past meeting, so that's my update. Any questions?
The gas, natural gas hookup to the high school, has that been completed yet?
It has not. There was some holdup with that, and it's still in the works. I can double-check and see where they're at right now. I believe they were waiting for the actual pad and the meter setup. I think it slowed down on the bridge coming over 395.
Yeah, that was a holdup, right.
That was a long, real snafu there, and then, so now they're waiting for the meter pad on the other side of that, and so I believe we've had to go out and purchase oil, and of course, we didn't have a great rate locked in anywhere, so I can't give you a specific on that, but I'm sure it was not pretty.
Was it enjoyable?
No. So, the natural gas, it's still in the works, and the last we heard, they were just waiting for that, that final step, and, you know, contractors and parts and materials, all that fun stuff.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, once the connection is made, is the boiler or any updates that are needed at the school already done, or will that have to be done after the hookups finish?
I believe that they have to be done after, because... I believe that they have to be done after, because they're waiting for the gas. So, it's one of those deals, you can't put the cart before the horse, and, and so, yeah. There, and, so the high school and over at KCS, I believe, are both, they're ready, but they'll have to be converted.
Thank you.
It's just the burner in the, in the boiler, so it's not replacing the whole system. It's just the burner, and they'll probably change it to a dual, to a dual fuel burner. It's, and they have to do it at the same time that they're actually making the gas connection. So, it'll happen at the same time.
Thank you.
So, I don't know if this would be to Kyle or Mary. So, for next year, how would that work for locking in? Would you do that, or would they be responsible for that, and when would they have that on their timeframe?
Yeah, so for natural gas, they typically have locked in independently of the town. We haven't, we, we don't have a huge demand on that. Sometimes, we've worked together on that. I can re-go over what those, I think we've used the CCM procurement process in the past as well for natural gas lock-in. For heating fuel, for heating oil, we did not include them in the lock-in this last year.
That's what I was referring to, sorry.
Yeah, we didn't include them, because we, it was anticipated that they were going to be actually connected back in, like, the fall. And so, we didn't, that is a large consumption of oil, and so, if we included them and they did actually start with the natural gas, then we would have had a huge buyout of heating oil for that contract. So, we did not include them in the contract for oil this last time around, and we would again not include them upcoming, because the assumption is that this is going to take. So, we have that conversation with them. So, the anticipation is that they'll get up and running on natural gas, but.
Okay.
So, we did not, that's why they've kind of been out on a spot market for heating oil.
I guess on a bright side, it has been a milder winter this year. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Wood.
Just with the water service, what exactly, I don't know how much you can comment on, like, what exactly happened there? I know, well, there was a little bit of a Winnie article that didn't really explain too much of it, so.
I'm not 100% sure. There, there was an operator that was out of Rhode Island, and they stopped servicing Connecticut. They in turn had an interim person that they dealt with on a somewhat regular basis. He filled in, and now, I guess they're, they're out there looking for a, a more permanent, you know, answer.
Yeah, so we have, they have an interim water operator right now that is filling in. However, we, the previous operator, in accordance with our requirements with, with the State Department of Drinking Water, we're supposed to have a remote monitoring system on there. The previous operator removed that technology out of there. It was their technology, they removed it out. So, an incoming operator is going to have to reinstall that technology. We've been in regular conversations, so our Dave Cap, our engineer, has been working with the State Department of Drinking Water, as well as Board of Education staff, in coordinating the RFP for this. That's in my manager's report as well. So, this will cut down some of my manager's report information, just so you know.
We're really working on cutting that down tonight.
We're cutting that down. So, uh, so the interim one, he is meeting the requirements at this point, but for the long haul, it's not likely a permanent solution. So, we need to get to a permanent, long-term operator contract that the Board of Ed can enter into. So, we have that RFPed on the streets. The Board of Ed staff, they were just, they don't, that's, an RFP like that isn't something that they do on a regular basis, and managing contractors like that isn't something that they necessarily handle on a regular basis, which is why we offer to assist on the, on the town engineer side and walk it through on our side as well, and make that assist. So, it's kind of gotten out on the street pretty quickly. Dave and Mike and Bob have, you know, they've all worked really closely together in making sure we address the existing needs and any upcoming needs. The walkthrough, I think, is Thursday, and then they'll have the bid opening for it. So, hopefully, we'll get a good turnout for potential operators on that system.
And thank you for coming out, Kyle.
No, we got an 90-day notice.
I believe it was.
We did get appropriate notice according to contract.
Okay, but still, that's a tough, that's tough to run that system up here, it's not.
Right, but the contractor, when they exited, they did, they did provide appropriate notice under their contract.
So, so what's happening with the monitoring thing? Like, do we have one on there right now?
It's manually being monitored, so they're going down manually and monitoring. So, and the state is aware of that situation, and they're aware of the steps that we're taking to move back into that remote 24-hour monitoring. And so, we're, they understand the process that we're going through.
Depending on the level of treatment that's in the system. It requires remote monitoring, and so, they fell in under that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Grandowski, thank you for joining us this evening. Moving on in the agenda, we'll move on to the next item, which is 11B, Borough Council Liaison.
Not, not much going. We're continuing to work on our website. Slow but surely. That kind of, it almost sounds like their, their water issue. It just takes, although, every time you move a little further, you find more bumps and, and oopsies. So, the truck's been ordered. You should be getting, that's, well, as soon as they can get us the truck. And just, everything's moving along. Our borough elections and the charter revision is, we're moving along, so. Things are progressing.
Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is item 12A, Discussion and Acceptance of Monthly Budget Reports. Can I get a motion to accept the summary report on general fund appropriations for town government?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Motion has been made by Ms. George, seconded by Mr. Grandowski. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 12B, Discussion and Acceptance of Monthly Budget Reports. Can I get a motion to accept the system object based on adjusted budget for the Board of Education?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Ms. George. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to item 13, Correspondence Communication Reports, the Town Manager's Report.
Okay, so, as indicated at, at your last week's meeting, when you met with the Economic Development Commission, we did, we are the recipient of the Yukon Tabs Municipal Assistant Program again this spring, and that is for the Bailey Hill Mill site. They're going to be starting the evaluation of that site to determine any possible contamination and identify any previous remediation efforts that might have been conducted on the site. So, this is really that first step into kind of really figuring out what's the holes and the gaps and understanding where are the challenges with that site, so that site can start to, begin to progress into potentially redevelopment at some point in time. So, I, they actually were out tail end of last week, or was it yesterday? Might have been yesterday they were out. I think it was yesterday, they were out yesterday. So, they started looking at the site. They went out and did a site visit yesterday. So, they're already beginning that process, so it's great. This is our second mill site that has been chosen for this, and there's, you know, this program, there were only about seven projects that were selected for this, for this program. So, Jill did a really great job in writing that grant application and that proposal to get it submitted into here. And this program, getting the projects submitted under this program, typically, the ones that get into this program have a better, better availability into moving forward and progressing into Phase II environmentals and getting grant funding at other levels. So, we've been successful with the Bailey, with the Blueville Mill in progressing that one forward under another grant funding option. So, we're hoping that that would progress forward for Bailey Hill Mill as well. So, it's great to start to see that momentum moving forward. We met with Frontier with regards to the fiber project. So, as with most of the communities around here, they're rolling out fiber across the state. So, I did incorporate in your package their PowerPoint presentation that they presented to us. We did, we did get to view the map that, where they're developing, where they're going to be rolling out. They don't share that. That is their proprietary information, so they don't distribute that. But essentially, where they're rolling it out, we'll pretty much provide coverage throughout all of Killingley. So, we really anticipate getting full cover, Frontier anticipates having coverage throughout Killingley. In the PowerPoint presentation, it does incorporate or include in, in there what they are presenting to potential subscribers for rates, for residential rates. So, you can see what the two packages, if you will, that they're kind of offering. It's towards the very end of their presentation. It also does provide pictures of what their aerial fiber hubs are going to look like, the little boxes that are going to be on the telephone poles. We did walk through that and talk through that in great detail, especially with regards to any impacts from winter weather, rain weather, that type of stuff. There's really nothing in there that can get damaged by the wind, by the, by the rain or, or snow. They also put it on the protected side, if you will, of the, of the telephone pole. So, it does have lesser possibility of damage. But again, they are very accustomed to this rollout and this design, and have this in many areas that have, you know, frequent snow. So, they were cognizant of our concerns, but again, there doesn't seem to be any concern from a public safety standpoint, and they're also putting it on the protected side. So, this rollout is going to really start in the spring, and it's going to take a few months for them to complete it. It does have phone numbers in here for individuals that you can call and find out when they think service is going to be coming through, or you can go onto Frontier's website and try and see, just keep tabs of when service might be available in your area if you want to check out what pricing might be for your home and for your residence. The next topic that I included for you was an update or information with regards to Chase Reservoir. So, Chase Reservoir, we have a number, we have hiking paths that are around Chase Reservoir. And this property really kind of came to my attention. I will say, my staff brought, mentioned it to me really closely, like, around the fall timeframe, that conservation has really been talking about needing to do forest management plan on here, but that there was a fair amount of damaged and diseased trees on this property. Right after the windstorm at Christmas, I made a point of going out there to visit the property. There is pretty severe damage on the property. There's a lot of downed trees, actually, right now. I walked the property just a few weeks ago, and the trail itself, there's about six areas that it's completely blocked. I'm talking, you know, it's not just one tree, it's, you know, four or five trees that are down, all kind of stuck together, or there may be two trees that are across the trail, and then there's one tree that's kind of hung up and stuck. The trail also is, is very wet. You can actually see in some of the pictures what looks like mud spots, but it's actually water running through the trail. So, the ground is too soft right now for us to really bring equipment in to really cut, re-cut open those trails. So, we're monitoring that to see when we can actually bring in equipment to actually cut, re-cut open the trails. That being said, we did reach out to Connecticut Deep. They have a forestry program that can provide consultation services up to eight hours per year. They only come out for eight hours in a year on one property. So, they came out, the forester did come out. He, they, the forester evaluated the conditions, and they provided a written report. So, we did just, very end of last week, we did receive the report. Haven't had a chance to really go through that report, but I've been meeting with staff to go over what his recommendations were in that report. And our intentions are, is to use that report as a platform to creating an RFP to hire a forester to develop a forest management plan for the property. We have concerns about the amount of dead trees that are on the property for a number of reasons. One, for public safety, the proximity of a lot of them to the actual trail pathway. I did check what the town's liability might be around that. And as for any trail or any open space property, anybody going onto a trail, they do assume a level of risk. So, the town is protected under recreational, recreational immunity. So, individuals, you know, do assume a certain level of risk when they go hiking on a trail. But that being said, it's going to be very difficult to maintain that trail open with the amount of just dead and dying trees that are right in such close proximity. Also, with the amount of dead wood that has fallen. When you drive down Pratt Road, you can actually see, over by the bolt launch area, it actually almost looks like a microburst went through. Like, if you were to look through there, it would actually look like a microburst. They're just laid flat through there. There's so much dead stock that's down on the ground right now, that there is concern that if we have another severe drought timeframe, that there, there's also a heavy fire load that's on the ground as well. So, the forest management plan will help us identify what are our steps to move forward in addressing that property and bringing it to a better health, right? So, we can still maintain it as a, as a passive recreational property. So, that's the intent for that property. So, I did give you a number of pictures of, of that property, mostly around the trails, trail areas. If anybody wants to walk the property or see what it looks like, you can get a good sense of it by just driving down the dirt area of Pratt Road. It, it's pretty, pretty obvious from the roadway. But if anybody wants to walk the trail, let me know. We'll gladly take you down the trail and walk down the trail. But you're going to start to see some additional signage go up just to remind people that they're passing at their own risk, that they need to make sure. There is, there are signs up there that say that, but we are going to probably put some more signage up just to remind people they need to be cautious about where they're walking and to be mindful of their surroundings. Ediprey Reservoir Dam. So, that, I believe you got, I meant to include the picture in with the packet, and apparently, I must have missed it. So, you, I believe you got that separately, yes. There's two pictures, one above the water that shows the funnel, one below the water. And if you were to go out there today, and all you're going to see is a hole now, because the water has drained, right? So, the bathtub is drained out. So, we received a notice from the property owner Wish, the dam owner Wish, that they were experiencing excessive water that was coming underneath the dam, through the dam, and that there was concerns about the, whether or not the road was going to be impacted. So, we've had the road closed throughout this entire duration. The water is now down to that, the whole area that you see on that picture of the underwater. It's now down to that area. The property owner, the dam owner, owner Wish, they are in communication with Deep. They have to develop a remedy or a solution that is approved by Deep on how to handle this. The approach that they're taking at this moment is, their intent was to get to essentially the level that they're at right now, which is the water has drained to that, to the bottom of the dam, which is essentially where that hole is, at the bottom of the dam. They will now breach the dam and essentially create it as a, as an overflow spillway, which will spill over into the space between the reservoir and the road. There's like a little holding area, if you will. There's a little spillway area right there, and then there's pipes that go under the road that carry the water over to middle reservoir. And then it, and then it continues to head downstream from there. They do have to submit plans to the town. We have to be sure that the volume of water that they're intending to have go through those pipes. those pipes is not going to overwhelm the pipes and therefore damage the roadway. But so far, we've not had any problems with that throughout this entire process. The water has come out in a slow enough fashion that it hasn't impacted the roadway. There was the original, there's three pipes actually under the road. The oldest pipe, which is also the lowest pipe, the oldest pipe did have some erosion around the pipe that was creating some channeling towards the roadway. We did put in some gravel to armor that area around the pipe and so we prevented that erosion. So the water has been flowing, but the water's been flowing through all three pipes without a problem. Deep did communicate to Wish that they needed to communicate or send, send notices, send letters out to all of the abutting property owners. Wish did reach out to our engineering department to try and get a list of abutting property owners. We helped them navigate that process of how to identify who the abutting property owners are and, and their contacts. So we believe that those letters, if they haven't already gone out, they're in the process of getting those letters out to them. But we suspect that the water level that the, that is out there now is likely going to be the remaining water level of where it will remain going forward. We believe that Deep will...
Is the, if the water levels down to where it may be and is, is the road still closed or is it open now?
So we still have it closed until we can verify that there, that the, so we did get a call today that there was concern that beavers were trying to like replug up the hole. We don't want that to happen. So until we know that it's stabilized, we'll, we will have it closed. Deep is well aware that the road is closed and we don't want to keep it closed any longer than we have to, and they want to expedite the reopening as well.
Okay.
So we're trying to get that reopened as quickly as possible.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on the dam? Okay. The legislative cycle, session that we're in right now, it's very, very active. There are hundreds of bills that are going through right now. It'll make you head spin in five seconds, but, so there's a number of them that we're following, but two that I wanted to highlight for you because one of them, I gave you a copy of the testimony that both I and the Director of Recreation submitted, and the second one I'm, I'm getting in the process of submitting testimony, both in opposition of. So the first one is House Bill 6574, an act concerning municipal summer camps. This bill would require municipal summer camps to become licensed under the Office of Early Childhood, which is, and that is a similar licensing to private daycares. Our opposition to this is that, number one, municipal daycare, municipal summer camps, we have a number of local oversight that already occurs to these. There's a number of inspections that already occur at the local level for this. We already background check all of our staff members. They already perform training through CPR and all of those components, but it's not done through OE, OEC, right? And that would cry, would add a whole new layer of bureaucracy around that and cost. It would increase cost. OEC doesn't have the personnel to come out and inspect. They would have to come and inspect every location that your summer camp is going to be at. So they would have to come out and inspect Owen Bell, they would have to inspect the, the individual, you know, we're having a kiss this year, they would have to inspect any other sites that we would be going to. And they'd have to do that for every town across the state. It's just unreasonable in a very short timeframe. And if they don't do it, then you can't hold the camp there, you know? So you get hamstringed for that. Among a laundry list of other things that they wanted to add into, add into the requirements. So a number of municipalities, so COST and CCM both submitted testimony in opposition, as well as a number of municipalities have submitted opposition on that bill. The other one that I'm submitting, in the process of submitting testimony in opposition of, is Senate Bill 935, and this requires, is an act requiring pensions for police officers and firefighters employed by municipalities. So this, this, this legislation would require towns that have police officers and firefighters, for Killingley, it would just be our police officers because we don't employ firefighters, to offer pensions through the state municipal employee retirement plan, which is a defined benefit plan, which is a substantially different plan than what we already offer to our, our employees. It is substantially more expensive. It's a much, much more expensive. This bill was pushed by one of the union groups within the state. Many towns, COST, CCM, many of the towns, we are all coming out in opposition to this as well. We all unanimously are saying, you know, number one, this should be, if you have a union, this pension is collectively bargained. It should remain in a collective bargaining agreement. That is a, that is a decision to be made between the local, between the town, the municipality and the employees. That should not be dedicated, legislated by the state legislation. So it, so we're actively going in opposition to that. The town of Killingley has never been a member of the Connecticut MERS municipal employee retirement system. We have our own defined benefit plan that we're, you know, more, we're 100% funded on. Connecticut MERS plan is not 100% funded. We don't need to be part of that plan. We manage our pension plan very well, but we also sunsetted, for the most part, have sunsetted the availability of employees to get into the defined benefit plan. We did that many years ago because of the sustainability of it. We moved most of our employees to a defined contribution plan. So by and large, most of our employees, the only access they have is a defined contribution plan, which is more predictable and generally less financial, you know, more economical for the community in the long run. So, but still a pension. It's a, it's a pension. So that's the other oppositional one. The three items under projects with Board of Education, Kyle had already kind of mentioned all three of them. So we, I had really approached the superintendent with regards to the HVAC systems evaluation because the Board of Educate, the state approved funding last year around upgrades to school buildings HVAC systems, but you had to have a shovel-ready project. You already had to have design, you already had to have evaluations completed, and the turnaround time on the grant submission was like 45 days. There's no way to get that done. I'm hearing that it sounds like they're going to be funding that again in the second go around. So it makes sense that perhaps the Board of Education looks at having that evaluation done. Again, it's just a matter of we're more accustomed to writing these types of RFPs than, than their staff is. So we kind of stepped in in that assistance role to assist with writing those RFPs and kind of helping them through just the procurement bid process. The rest of this is really all Board of Education. So they'll select who it is, they'll engage in and, and move through that process with whatever vendor they select, but this was, we were just helping them get through the bidding process on all three of those items. Number seven, Owen Bell Park improvements. So as all of you may remember, when Joyce Ritchie passed away, their family members did a GoFundMe page and raised funds for, they wanted to do something in memory of her, something within the town, and the family had chosen, they raised about, they raised $11,000. They wanted to have the installation of a new pavilion down at Owen Bell. And $11,000 is a lot of money and it's a, it's a great start towards that pavilion, but it doesn't fully get a pavilion. May Flexer had reached out to Bucky and myself and said, you know, maybe there's a way that I can get some state funding to help get, bridge the gap and get the rest of that done. And if there's any other improvements at Owen Bell, let me see what we can do. So I drafted a, I did the letter and submitted that letter to her, looking for funding for the, the rest of the pavilion, any remaining funds that we might need with regards to the dredging of, of the pond, of the pond at Owen Bell. We will be putting that out to bid, so we'll have a more finite number on that, but the dredging component. And then lastly, one of the things that we've identified, and it's going to be in your capital improvement plan that's going to be presented in the budget, so I know this is a little early for submission and it hasn't come to you guys yet, but I saw the window of opportunity and took it. So forgive me for kind of taking that window, but one of the things that we have seen, our splash pad is, as you know, enormously popular, right? And it's popular not which is Killingley, but with the entire Northeast, and it is a big draw, a big draw. And it draws people also to our stores and our shops and our restaurants, right? So we get a benefit from having that here. But one of the things that, you know, and many times I've been to Owen Bell, one of the things that I see continuously and I hear from other families and I hear from our park staff and I hear from our recreation staff is that continually what we see is those really little kids, they're all around the outskirts because all of our, or most of them are around the outskirts, all of our features are really high up. And so the water comes from higher elevations or are at a higher pressure rate, which is really geared towards older children, right? And so the little kids don't like to have that much dumped on them all at once or have that much water all at them all at once, right? And, but we have a lot of toddlers. And so what's been, what we've noticed, and especially our park staff has really noticed this, our toddlers are digging holes around the splash pad and they're playing in the puddles of mud around the splash pad, right? You know, kids are creative, they're great, right? Which, you know, it's their way of still enjoying, right? But, so we, what I, what we wanted to look at was creating an appropriate playpad for them geared towards toddlers, right? Near the existing splash pad, kind of just across that walk path and create a toddler specific one. So it'll be a lower pressure, all of the, all of the equipment will be lower to the ground, more just toddler friendly, right? With that, it does mean that we'll have to drill another well because the existing well does not have enough pressure to do both pads at the same time. Also with that ask, I've also asked for, I've included in that ask shade canopies for, three different shade canopies. So the trees that are right there by the parking lot are going to have to come out. Their roots are damaged. One side is compressed by the parking lot, the other side, everybody's been putting lawn chairs in them and stomping all over them, and they're just compressed. They're starting to drop limbs and they're just, they're dying off. It's time for them to go. But once we take them out, there's not really going to be any shade, and that's going to be a problem in July and August and, you know, even September when families want to be out there for long periods of time enjoying the splash pads, but yet there's no shade, right? So we're proposing three shade structures to be put out there that would be better positioned, closer to the splash pad and just, you know, easier access for families. So that was the other component that we've, that I included in that. So I did transmit this letter to May, she has received it, and I will be touching base with her to see if there's anything else that she needs in that consideration process. And, you know, hopefully we'll be able to see some positive benefit come out of that. So the town is, you know, contributing on our side. You know, I've outlined in that, in that funding request, the town's contribution, the town will be doing installation for a number of these things. So, you know, our labor, our equipment is going to be utilized for that. And then of course, the funds that were already raised by the family and then for the dredging project, the town has already committed funds for that too. So I am showing the town's contributions on each of those. And then lastly, Killingley Police, I just wanted you to be aware, you know, they're just trying, as activity occurs or, you know, maybe happening in a neighborhood, they felt it would be good to have a form that they could give to neighbors as they're canvassing neighborhoods that, you know, here, you know, if you can remember something or if you see something, here's the information so that way somebody might be able to put it on the refrigerator or have it ready in their house. So this is, you know, it's obviously two of the forms, but a form that an officer may hand out to a resident as they're canvassing a neighborhood. It'll, it gives them a phone number to call. If there is an active case that they're working on, it'll have a case number on it so that way if somebody is trying to report something specific about a case, it's easier to, they'll know it's the, they'll know the case number, right? And they can directly reference that. It makes an easier connection for that. And they'll also have the investigating officer's name attached to it as well. So just things, it does provide some tips for individuals just on how to, you know, better protect their homes. But just that way you're aware of this, so if you, you know, if anybody, you know, brings it to your attention, you're aware that this is just a form that will be out in the community as needed. It's not, you know, going to be out all the time, but as needed, you know, we did go through a period of time that we had some home invasion activity or we had some car break-ins that were happening. This can help streamline that communication to the, to the investigating officer. And then I just listed some of the regular meetings and they seem to be repeat ones because they seem to be going to all the same meetings every single month. Like they just keep repeating. Any questions?
On the, the Chase Reservoir?
Yes.
So we've got, the DEP has come in and they're submitting their report.
Yes.
So we've got to wait to evaluate that.
Yes.
Do you have an estimate for, we're going to have to do a forest management plan?
Yeah, so I think...
Yeah, okay.
So for the development of a forest management plan, I think is probably going to be between the $5,000 and $10,000 mark for the development of a forest management plan. And I think that we can probably look to utilize Open Space Land Acquisition Trust for funding that development of a plan. And so, and then we would, that plan will then tell us, you know, is it going to, you know, what level of investment, what level of dollars is going to be needed into correcting the issues that we have at that property? But this is the first of many properties that we need to do forest management plans on, right? So my goal really is to look at trying to get a forest management plan done, a minimum one a year, right? Because it does cost money, right? To try and get one done a year and we're trying to go with our, what I would say is our most popularly used properties, so Chase Reservoir, Quandoc, you know, those more actively utilized properties first and then going to the properties that may just be blank open space, because we still should have forest management plans for those that are just slated as open space. But just to try and kind of start that process of working through what that might look like for the town. It gives, I think, the town, the Conservation Commission, Open Space Land Acquisition Committee, a better understanding of what is involved when we're inquiring or maintaining or activating a space from open, just raw open space into passive recreation or just acquiring open space. What does it mean for the town to do that and what should we be looking at when we're looking at those? So the goal right now is for Chase because it is in such critical condition. Our next one, we would probably, you know, punch list and look to see about getting some input from some of the other commissions on, you know, really what's the, what's the priority list for really the next ones, but our first one is this one.
Now to follow up, so we could start with the forest management plan under, or are you going to wait till next budget cycle or would, could we start this?
I think we can start this now. So our plan, my plan is hopefully, I'm not sure about this week because I'm inundated with budget meetings this week, but my hope is that between this week and next week, I can meet with my land use staff to go over the report that we got from Deep and with our town engineer to go over that report and see what we need to use out of that report in crafting the RFP. So I would like to get the RFP on the street for hiring a forester to develop the forest management plan. So that will take us, you know, and we would... So that will take us, you know, and we would hopefully be able to award that in, you know, April, early May. We're in, we're in February right now, right? Sorry. I don't know what month I'm in. So February, so yeah, by, by April, hopefully we should be able to award that. And then we would be able to have that start to develop what the forest management plan actually looks like. That does mean that it's going to be off, you know, we're not going to have a budget request in next budget cycle, this upcoming budget cycle, for implementation of a forest management plan, because we're not going to have that forest management plan. We're not going to have that yet. But we would be able to then strategize for the upcoming year, or look at what other funding resources might be available to the town to activate a forest management plan. So there's a couple of things that we could look at.
That's where the big, the big dollar item. The forest management plan itself is not too bad.
Right.
But the implement, with all the dead, everything out there, it's been, I mean, I've been on, you know, Liaison, the Conservation, I've been on the council. And the forest management plan has been there for almost my whole time. So it's taken finally to get this step going. But it's not going to be inexpensive once we get, you know, to make it safe and all of that. That's us. But like you say, the forest management plan will take us through next year, so there's no budgeting for actually doing the work, because we're not going to know the extent of it.
Yeah, we're not really going to know the extent until they get through that forest management plan. And that's going to take some time for them to really assess the property and determine what really needs to get done to the property, and making those short-term, midterm, and long-term goals for the property. That's really what's in your forest management plan, the short-term, midterm, and long-term goals. So until we really have that, we can't really make a determination as to, you know, what reasonably are we looking at for money? Because again, each property is different. It depends on what's there. You know, there could be marketable timber in there, right? There may be other offsetting revenue that could be generated. And again, a forester would know what would potentially be revenue generation within that inventory versus it's a straight-out, you know, you're going to have to pay to get rid of it.
Well, that's why I was looking at the forest management plan under the current budget cycle. That's why I posed that question.
Yeah.
So we could get started.
Right.
And then, because it's not that big of an amount, but.
Right. And so you might see, for the Open Space Land Acquisition Trust, that may need to have council approval for the expenditure of the funds out of, out of the Open Space Land Acquisition Trust. I have to go through that, step through that process. So there may be a, an approval level that has to occur for that expenditure to occur in the current fiscal year. So, you know, potentially next month or the following month, you might see an item on your agenda for that.
But at least we have monies, we have something available. We possibly could, maybe we may did not disagree, or whatever, we can discuss that. But there is a revenue source to do this portion right now.
Yeah, possibly, yeah.
Down the road, we're going to be hit with a, it's going to be a serious expenditure, and it's a start. On the, number one, on the Bailey Hill project. So this is, this is under the mud regulations. They can have both, you can have all three. You can have industrial, residential, and commercial use in that property. So they're, they're aware that.
Yes.
Those uses are going to be there. That's a critical.
Yeah, so they, that's one of the steps that they do in this evaluation, is they pull all the zoning overlay, what the actual uses of the property can be, so they can determine at what, what they have to, what they have to look for for contamination levels. So, and then they have to fill in those gaps.
So now, on the school projects, on the Hy-Vac system, is, is there money, I guess I should have asked the question to the Board of Ed Liaison, is money, or money in their budget to cover some of these engineering costs? Or is it something that we're using in-house to get to a point, or?
No, so this is, so again, once they receive those bids, you know, the superintendent would have to take that to the Board of Education for whatever funding authorization he needs from them, whether they have to use non-lapsing, or whether they have funds within the budget to utilize for those. He, he has to work through that with the Board of Education.
Okay. But that's again.
On its point, so what do we do? We just bill them for our time?
Yes. So with, with our, with any expenditure that we've had, like the advertising of it, any of that, we just bill the, we bill the Board of Education for those costs. Yep. We actually just charge their budget line item.
And then on the, the Owen Bell, the dredging project, is there's, are you looking at any kind of a timeframe, or how, how is that? We've got some costs. I mean, these costs are tremendous.
Yeah, so the dredging, the $175, that was a very conservative estimate. We think that it might be lower than that, which is why we're getting ready to, we're going to be drafting that RFP and putting it out. Because we may actually have sufficient funds where we're at right now to get that done. If so, we'll proceed to trying, moving that for beginning this July. So right after the Run for Ryan, which is the second Saturday in July, we would begin the dredging process. So we would start to do the RFP process. And we were looking to start the RFP process, and then we'll do the final planning process on getting the dredging done. Because you want to do that one in the, really in the heat of the summer, because you want it during the driest points of the year.
Are we going to curtail, so it's going to have an effect on Owen Bell?
It is. It's going to really impact the soccer field area, where the track is. That will be slated out. That'll be no longer accessible. Because the material is going to be going in that, is going to be, right now, that's where we have it slated to be. De-watering is on the soccer field.
So are we giving the groups that use these facilities, we're giving them?
We've already notified them. Yep.
That's shutting them down.
Yeah, we've already, yeah.
We have to do it.
We've already notified them all that utilize the soccer field, and also cross-country, because it would also impact the availability of cross-country for the next, for the next seasons. So we've already notified them. This is a top, we've been in conversations with the Board of Education on this, and with those entities now for more than a year. So this is not a surprise. This project has been pretty well communicated to those organizations for a good amount of time now.
Because a few comments, not, not too bad, but what are we going to do?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to look ugly.
This is critical path if we don't.
Right, and it's one of those things. It's, it's really ugly, and it's really messy when we have to do it. But the intent, and that's why we're, and that is also why, while we're doing it, we're going deeper, and we're ma, and we're increasing the volume of it. So we're not going to have to repeat this in any ti, anytime soon, right? So.
When was the last time it was dredged?
We don't know that it has been.
Probably never.
It hasn't been.
It was the existing pond.
Yeah, it hasn't been. So again, this will go for generations to come, and we're not going to have, but it's painful when you have to do it. It's just painful.
And where does, I mean, this is under designed circumstances now. We're looking, it's not just have a pond, and we, we know the flows, and there's a lot of stuff in the background. So I, I am, I mean, yeah, it's, it's a messy project.
It is.
But I, I think it's going to benefit Owen Bell tremendously down the road, you know, so. And like you say, I, I hope, I'm glad you were saying this summer, because I.
Yeah.
You said, following somewhere.
No, this summer. That's why we want to get out to bid now.
That's good.
And our hope is that, you know, that number comes in more positively than what we've initially estimated.
And the other item that's not on here is the, the Health Department, that $3.75 increase in the per capita. That's a humongous.
It is a significant increase. So that was presented at the NCOG meeting, this last NCOG meeting. So the NDTH has given an estimated increase for the budget. It's not a hard and firm. It's an estimated increase. So their current per capita rate is $7.50. They're estimating an increase of $3.75 per capita, which brings it to $11.25. For Killingley, that's a $66,000 increase. It's more, it's 50%. It's a, it's a substantial increase. All of the towns have been very oppositional to that increase. I have requested Sue Starkey, the Director for NDTH, to come to your March meeting to do a presentation on what they, what that, what that increase is for. I will say at the, at the NCOG meeting, it was very abbreviated as to what the explanation was. It was essentially wages and inflation, and that was, I think, pretty much all we were told, right?
Yeah, we want to go into detail.
Yeah, there was really no details provided. So I did, I have had a conversation with Sue subsequently, and have reiterated to her the need for more details, especially around payroll. One thing I had asked at the NCOG meeting was if the payroll included an expansion of service. She did finally indicate that it appears that they were going to be hiring one additional position. But we, I don't know to what extent that increase in salary, what that costs them, or what that impact is to the per capita. The, she indicated me, to me by phone, that she, working with her Board of, her finance group, that they were, she anticipated that they were down to at least a two and a half, a $2.50 increase, and potentially lower than that, and they're working on trying to further reduce that. Again, I'm not sure at what extent that is. I was, I will be communicating with our, I have not yet. I will be communicating with our directors, our board members. So we have three, we have two board members, and the Borough has a board member. I will be communicating with the, with the members, with our board members, and I will be meeting with the, with the Borough next week to kind of discuss what their viewpoints are on this. I'm looking to have the NDTH, our NDTH board members, come to your March special meetings. That way you can have a meeting with just your board members, as opposed to also having the executive director for Sue, have Sue here as well. But you can have a meeting with just your representatives to give them guidance. The number from NDTH does not get finalized until the, their Board of Directors approves their budget in April. As far as what the town has for alternatives, we, in order for us to go to a different health district, so Eastern Highlands is another health district, Ledge Light is another health district. In order for us to go to either one of those health districts, we, the legislative body would have had to have taken action before January 1st, which we have not. So we are in it for next fiscal year. That's by state statute. Our board members, the board, by joining NDTH, by their bylaws and becoming a member of NDTH, we agreed that our board member acts as the fiscal person, if you will, for our representation on NDTH. And whatever NDTH board sets for their budget means the town will fund. So I think it's imperative that our board members understand the town's position, your position on where you see that funding, because they will be taking that and setting that action. And once they set that budget in April, that will be the town's responsibility for funding NDTH in next fiscal year. That being said, we can look at alternatives for the following fiscal year. And there's a number of different options that we could look at after that. And, you know, we can have that as a discussion item on a future agenda to, you know, for you guys to give me direction on what you want me to consider and look at and bring back to you.
So at some point after April, when we see what's going on, then we could determine if we want to leave them. We can vote on that, as long as before.
As long as you vote on it before January 1st of next year.
And how many municipalities are in the Northeast District?
It's all of them that are in NCOG. There's quite. Oh, I think it's more than that.
Thirteen or nineteen?
There's more than.
Seventeen, thirteen or nineteen? I've been looking at all the districts around the state.
That's a number.
And putting numbers together.
Yeah.
And that ask is pretty high.
Yeah, so Eastern Highlands, their increase, their rate, per capita rate, including their increase for next year, brings their per capita rate to $5.50 for next year. Eastern Highlands, including their increase to come into next year, brings their per capita rate to right around, I think it's like in the mid 720s. So it's a substantial increase. And so that's what I have, I have Sue, and she has already responded, saying that she will be here on March 14th for our presentation. And I will be, again, reaching out to the, our, our board representatives on NDTH to see. I have spoken to Dave Griffiths. He said that he would be willing to come at your special meeting in March. I'll reconfirm that with him. I just have to reach out to your other new member, Sean.
See, because through the grapevine, they haven't been doing the restaurant inspections in a timely manner. But no one wants to complain because of reprisals.
From them.
From them.
Right.
The Septic Guys, you know, kind of not quite as bad, but they're saying, you know, there's some issues. They're not showing up on time, whatever. But they will support, everybody from out of town that goes to the Brooklyn Fair, those permits are issued, all these others. They're, the out-of-town people are taken care of, and we, we are, they'll sort of, but nobody wants to admit to that. It's, you can't say my name, you can't, and I'm getting it from a number of individuals, so. That's why I bring this up forward tonight, that there's some, you know.
It's right on their, not to interrupt it, it's right on their website about not increasing the fees for the Brooklyn and Woodstock Fair for those. They, they want to keep those costs down. So instead of increasing a revenue stream, they'd rather put it on us.
Oh, let's see that. Okay, I've not got the, okay.
I've been doing a lot of research.
Yes, no, this is good. That's, well, you were at the, at the NCOG meeting, so.
Yeah, I've been typing.
This is, yeah, so we need to get.
I've been on the phone.
This is, get this information out there, and.
Yeah, we have to.
Now, I do have one question. When we have our board members, the NDTH board members here for the special meeting, can we discuss things with them under executive session? Is that an option?
I can check with our attorney, but I don't know that it would meet the executive session requirements. So I think that you would be in open session.
Just to comment on that, I think it would be better for the public to hear why we have a concern. Because, you know, they get so much praise. And I think it's important that people understand, like, what they actually do compared to what they're supposed to do, and what this increase could impact all of our constituents, like the town. And it's not just us, it's all of these municipalities. So I think it should be public.
And I completely understand that. I also look at it from the aspect of, sometimes you'll get more information out of someone if they're, if it's in executive session and it's not televised. But, I mean, as Mary said, it's probably not going to be something for the eligible for.
Yeah, it wouldn't be eligible for executive session.
Okay.
And I will say that I have had a number of towns reach out to me just, you know, feeling out what, you know, what do you think Killingley is going to be looking to do? And I've reached out to a number of communities just to, you know, gauge what their responses were. And I can say that a number of them are looking for alternatives.
Real quick on the police communications, has that been put on, like, the Facebook page or anything? So that way their people aren't going, is this a fake thing that I've been getting?
Yeah, no, I haven't put it out yet. I wanted to first put it out here and let you all be aware of it. And then we'll be putting it out on a social media press.
Very good. There, I, that's all I could think about is, you know, I come home and I'm like, is this real?
Yeah, yeah, no, we will put it out as a social media press.
I guess, following up on the Health Department, the water issues up at the high school, that's under the NDTH. And are they responding, if there's issues up there, are they responding? I should ask the superintendent.
Yeah, it actually ends up, because it's considered a public drinking water, it's considered a public drinking treatment facility. So it actually falls under the state public drinking authority. It doesn't fall under. drinking authority, it doesn't fall under NDTH.
Okay, all right.
It's not like a private system well.
Well, I know it's not a private, right.
It's considered, because of the, because of the number of people that it services, it's considered a public drinking system.
Okay, so.
So, it's not like your typical home well or anything like that. So, it doesn't fall under NDTH, it falls under the state drinking water authority, state drinking water.
That was when I'm thinking about that, are they responding, with the issues we've had up there?
Yeah.
That's critical.
No, it's the state that responds to that.
All right.
And yes, the state does respond.
Okay, good.
I could tell you that.
Well.
Two, two quick things. Back to Parks and Rec and their summer camp, having been involved with them and helping secure their training, I can honestly tell you, I think we are the only municipal summer program that makes it mandatory that their, there's all of their staff, not just the counselors, all of their staff receive first aid and CPR recertification every single year. So, I think some, I think in that case, and I think we're probably better qualified than some private daycares are. As to the Health Department, having sat on the board, I'm not overly surprised. Sue was always jonesing, trying to get a larger increase to do, and with, I know I had, had a very hard time trying to keep her at bay, so I don't know if the board has relinquished some of the reins they had on her proposals. I'm hoping that the board will pull her back, because I think it would be devastating, particularly if several of the towns decide to leave NDTH, that would cripple them.
Or they'd be taken over by another district, right?
No.
They wouldn't, how would that work?
No, everybody, all, in, all the towns would choose what their options would be. So, whether towns would choose to go to another district, or whether towns would choose to form their own internal health department. But they don't get taken over by another district.
So, they would just age. Yeah, you can, you can put on your own health person to, to make sure you meet your 10 essential health services.
I'm just going to add real quick, the Frontier Project, I'm glad this is going through, I, I know it's going to be a huge benefit for the community, and I, having conversations with Frontier over the project, they have been extremely responsive. Questions I had due to where the equipment was going to be located, I was one of the people that got notified because of where my property is, and they got back to me almost instantly. Correspondence, every time I emailed them, they came back. So, I was definitely impressed with their level of customer service.
But are they going to cover the whole town? Because we've had issues with COVID that everybody, we have to put, I don't know what it was, to get internet everywhere.
So, their, their rollout will cover all of the town. Where their, how their, their implementation is going, so you're not necessarily going to see them on every single street, but their, it will still cover the entirety of the town.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we will move on in the agenda. Next item up is 14A, unfinished business for Town Council action. Consideration and action on a resolution authorizing the issuance of a letter supporting KB Ambulance's application for non-emergency transportation licensing. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'd like to make a motion to take it off the floor, if that's possible, off the table.
My understanding is, if this isn't picked up and discussed at this meeting, this is the last meeting, it's on the agenda, and it falls off the agenda, it wouldn't be on So, we have a motion to take it off the floor?
I'll second it.
Just for clarification, this means that the item would not be on any subsequent meetings unless it was added into an agenda as.
No, so what they're, so I want to make sure we understand that, we clarify. So, when you're taking something, when you're, when you're making a motion to take something off the table, that means that you are motioning to begin discussion of the item. So, you want to discuss the item.
Yes.
That's what you're doing tonight, is, you, when you take it off the table, you're discussing the, you're opening the item for discussion and possible motion.
Okay.
Is that, that's.
I believe I won discussion, yeah.
So, we got a motion and a second. Paul is in favor of taking it off the table, say aye. Abstentions? Motion carries? All right, so we are open for discussion over the letter of endorsement for KB Ambulance for the licensing. So, what do we have for comments?
My, my comment is that we had several, well, a couple of different answers to that. So, Day Kimball Hospital said that they didn't need a letter, so why are they coming to us if they don't need a letter?
I will respond to that one, because I had lengthy discussion with KB Ambulance over that. I have actually seen the documents that are required for submission for the application, and the letter is not necessary from Killenly, it would only be necessary from Putnam. What I was told by KB Ambulance, the reason why they came to Killenly for a letter as well, was out of respect for the fact that they are here in Killenly and they service Killenly, is why they came to us. They knew they didn't need the letter, they came to us, as they said, out of respect for us.
Well, out of respect for us, what about their other municipalities?
I do not know if they had reached out to them after. I did have a discussion, when I had my discussion with them, I did ask them if they, if they were planning on reaching out to them, and they said they were discussing it. So, I don't know if they have or not.
It seems like they put a lot of effort into not needing us. I'll leave that open.
I did have a discussion with someone at OEMS, asking what the ramifications would be if they didn't receive a letter from us, a letter of support from the Killenly Town Council. And what I was told was, it wouldn't necessarily stop them from getting the license, but they may have to answer questions. And now, if the Killenly Town Council came out with a letter in opposition of them, then it may make it more difficult for them to get their license.
So, the, one thing I'll say about all of this is that, we, we gave them homework, and I think we even gave Day Kimball homework, and when we asked them questions for follow-up, they didn't give us answers. And that's, that's one thing, I'm not really thrilled about, the fact that the chairman of their, their board reached out to me a few weeks ago, but via text message, and I responded in kind through email, and I have the email with me, with multiple questions, and I CC'd our chairman in that email as well, and I still don't have answers to questions. That concerns me. You know, we're asking, some of it's simple questions, some of it, all of our questions are legitimate, we're trying to understand, and the fact that they don't want to give answers to the town's people, it's not just us, we represent the entire town. And on top of that, we also help partially fund them as well. I, I think that they should have been answering us right straight along, and that's, to me, if you will, I feel like we've been disrespected on that end.
Well, if I may. A couple of weeks ago, Tammy had contacted me and asked if I would like to go meet with the Director, same person, and he canceled on us 15 minutes prior to when we were supposed to meet with him, with no follow-up since, right?
I.
Or did you get?
I, I did actually meet with their board chair. It's kind of the same line, they, you know, it's all, it's all private, and yeah, they are a private entity, I understand that. My concern is the integrity of the 911 system, because they're being, in order to institute this, you need two ambulances and 12 to 13 people, and if you're already running short on individuals. And I was at REC last night, at the REC Commission meeting, and one of the members mentioned the fact that one of the KB Ambulances was actually in a traffic accident the day before. So, if you've got two spares and one's in an accident, now who, how are you transporting for Killenly and this transport service if you, I mean, you can't just go to the local car dealership and get a, an ambulance. I, I'm very, very concerned, I mean, we, Day Kimball gave us nothing but flowers, really. I mean, we're, we're behind, we're, we're here to support them, well, how are you going to support them? This is a, a significant amount of money to get this off the ground, and I totally am, and hope that they do get this off the ground, but the way they're going about it is not financially, fiscally responsible. And I, I've been catching a lot of flack from people, you know, oh, you know, you know, this is about this, that, and every, I, I think it needs to be put out there, it's, even if we don't give them the letter of, and one of the things that, when I met with their board chair, well, this isn't going to look good on you guys. I, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure people understand, we're, we're looking out for the entire town. I mean, I hope that KB can get it up, off the ground, because that's a way to expand their business, and you, and business in order to survive has to expand. But this is not a good way to go on about it. It's, it's off a wing and a prayer, and, you know, there's not a whole lot of resources. If Day Kimball didn't have the money to be able to, to pay, to help them get this off the ground, then I know, I mean, they're supposed to be a nonprofit. How, how are they going to come up with the money? If Day Kimball couldn't come up with it, how is KB going to get? So, I just, and I, I have, I mean, I, I totally support all those EMTs and Matics. I mean, my job would be impossible to do if, if I didn't have them. But I want to make sure that KB Ambulance is around for another 70-plus years, and I, I'm very concerned that this could very well be a, be a bad thing, and I want to make sure the people understand. I want it publicly out there, that I want them to, I would love to see them expand, but not this way. This is, this is too off, rushed and off the cuff, and it's not my responsibility to, to take care, because other people didn't do their jobs right.
Thank you. I, I just want to throw out there that it, it isn't on KB Ambulance that this was rushed. This was, this was brought to.
Not at all. Oh, no, absolutely not.
In December, and it was less than 30 days from when Day Kimball wasn't going to have a transport service. And the way I looked at it is, KB was just trying to step up and fill a hole. Now, whether that's the best thing for the community or not, it's a matter of opinion. And it's, it could go one of three ways. I mean, it, this could go great, where everything works out great, and it's great for Day Kimball, it's great for KB Ambulance, and it's great for the community, because now they've got more staffing and more vehicles. And if there is a catastrophe, we have a huge accident, a multi-car accident on the highway, and you need multiple ambulances out there, and we have the additional equipment and staff for it, that would be great, if that's the way it works out. If it doesn't, it could really tax the 911 system, and that's one thing I would absolutely hate to see.
There's way too many ifs in what you just said.
I know.
Way too many ifs.
The, the problem with the ifs is they have no backup, they have no backup plan. They need to have a plan, there's no, they sat here and gave us word sandwiches all night long with no backup plan. Okay, we're going to do this, but if this fails, we're going to be able to do this. If this fails, we're going to be able to do this. What if we can't do this? You know, you, you have to have a plan. It's okay to have the what ifs, but if you have a backup plan to, to take care of your issues, then it's going to be, you know, then it's going to be substantial, you know what I mean? Maybe that's not the correct terminology, but you need a plan. They have no plan.
Well said.
Absolutely.
And I will be completely honest, one thing that I have been contemplating, because the wording of the required documents, even though it wasn't required from Killenly, was the letter of support would have to come from the chief elected official. In Putnam, that would have been the mayor, in Killenly, the chief elected official actually is the chairman of the Town Council. I had contemplated writing a letter myself. I was on the fence back and forth, I, I really was on this one, and it was a lot of the information that I got from a lot of people who are very knowledgeable with everything that's going on, that swayed me away from sending a letter out just as the chairman without the support of the council. And had I drafted a letter like that, there would have not been no we, it would have been I. It would have been just from me as the chairman. I just want to be completely transparent with everybody that, that is something, and I, I know I've discussed it with a lot of you, that that was something I had been contemplating.
So, I think for me, the lack of transparency from Day Kimball, these are the reasons I'm not in support. If KB already had the staffing, I would probably be on board, because it absolutely could benefit them. The other thing is, they are a nonprofit, this is a revenue stream, and they're not showing us where the startup funding for that is coming from, and they're not being transparent when we asked how much overtime over the past year, and they refuse to answer that. They're a nonprofit, and we give them funding, and so do their other municipalities in the budget every year. I think we have a right to know how much overtime they're paying, when they sat right there and stated that this transfer for Day Kimball right now is strictly overtime. So, I mean, what is this costing KB to do, of Day Kimball right now? They're already in financial dire straits. How, who's paying for the startup? And they don't have enough people. And we know there's a national shortage on personnel for emergency services, so when they say they need 12 to 13 people to run this thing, where are they getting them?
Without the certificate, Day Kimball has, is picking up the cost of the whole transfer?
They are, at, at overtime rates.
Yeah, exactly. So, it. Yeah, so it, it just, it doesn't, it seems like Day Kimball got themselves in a crunch. We found out through AMR, there was information, you know, not shared with us, shared, you know, misinformation, I'll call it. And then we get the whole picture, and they actually had longer, they could have gone to KB sooner than they did. And it seems like they waited, and this is just my opinion, and I don't care, I'll be the bad guy. They waited until crunch time to force us into a decision, and I don't, that's not good for anybody.
I feel like I'm not that comfortable going against the Fire Department and the Fire Chiefs, but I feel like if the letter said, good job, you know, you're, you're a great ambulance company, we like you, good luck, but if it's going to talk about financial feasibility, we just don't have the, I'm not hearing good things. So, that's a, that's a different letter than just saying, we like you, good luck. And that doesn't sound like what they're asking for.
Oh, KB Ambulance does a fantastic job. I'm not knocking KB at all. This plan of theirs with Day Kimball has too many questions, and they do not have the personnel to kick this off, and where's the money coming from?
That's what I was saying, in a different way.
Yeah, they're great at what they do.
And I know, and I think it was our last meeting, you did have a copy of the letter in the agenda.
Yes, I do have that, a letter with me. So, the letter that was drafted, I can just read it quickly, it's a very short letter. It says KB Ambulance Corp., Inc. has submitted an application seeking licensure to expand services to provide non-emergency transport for Day Kimball Hospital, including adding including adding two additional ambulances and one paramedic non-transport unit. The Killingley Town Council, the Killingley Town Council writes this letter in support of KB Ambulance Corp's application. Please do not hesitate to contact me should you have any questions. So it's a very short. It doesn't go into financial feasibility or anything like that. It just simply says that we support KB. That's it.
Yeah, but it does talk about financial. It says two ambulances and if that was not-
Because that's what their application says. Their application has to state, because they don't, that, that expands their fleet. They have to, they have to request authorization to add additional ambulances in order to have another ambulance on the road. They can't just buy an ambulance and put an ambulance on the road. They have to get authorization through OEMS for that. And so that's what that application does. It gives them authorization to have those addition, additional ambulances on the road. And so that's why that's specifically written in there like that is because that's what the app, part of, that's what that application is for.
Yeah, but how can we be held hostage? Verbiage on a letter that we are submitting, we're just saying, "You're doing a good job. We recommend this." All of a sudden, if there's language in there, there's some financial liability, there's, there's more li, I, I don't like, I, I couldn't-
I don't-
There is no liability to the town.
Yeah, and, and that's a discussion that we had had with the town attorney as well. That there is no liability on the town for the town supporting this letter. Because that was one question I had right from the beginning.
See, I, I, and I missed the, I missed the, the fire chiefs and all that, so it's, I, I, it's, I'm on a disadvantage, so.
There, there is no financial, you know, obligation from the town in regards to this because we're not purchasing their ambulances or things like that. However, should they not get their transfer license, should, should the state deny them? Because that process in and of itself is not an easy process. I, I, nobody can really think of the last time anybody got a transfer license. And companies have tried. So KB Ambulance now secures all this additional personnel. Where is their funding coming from? And so now it's going to be the burden of Killingley, Pomfert, Eastford and Hampton to supplement that? I mean, that's, that to me is not-
My understanding is-
Again, it's another what if, but-
My understanding is they can't even purchase the ambulances or the, the flycar or-
Right.
A paramedic transport without getting the license. So they wouldn't be buying them prior to getting the license. Because they wouldn't be, they have, don't have the authority to. That's my understanding with this whole process is it isn't like they're going to buy the ambulances and not get the license. And then it fall back on the towns that support them. They just wouldn't be able to buy them, period, until they get the license. And then at that point, then it would fall under the contract that they have with Dave Kimball to cover the cost of it.
And again, that was a question I had for KB that I emailed, asking, has Dave Kimball paid? I didn't ask for financial, like, amounts, things like that. That was not my business to know. I don't feel like that's our business to know. But I, I asked if they've actually even paid anything. And again, I've not received a single answer. Again, I, I think our, our, the residents in this town deserve answers for these kind of things. And, you know, I am kind of knocking them a little bit because of a lack of transparency. You know, that's where my bigger issue comes in.
So if there wasn't a vote in favor of sending that letter that you just read, there would be no letter sent at all. We wouldn't send one opposing it.
There's no motion on the table to draft one opposing.
You have no motion on the table to send a letter, period?
Exactly. We took it off the table for discussion.
You're just discussing. So you would be looking, you still would call a motion-
Yep.
On the item?
Is there any further discussion? So at this point, we'll move back to, I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution, authorizing issuance. There was a motion and a second to take it off the table for discussion. Okay. So-
Doesn't it just die if we don't?
If nobody makes a motion at this point, right? If you call for the motion-
Okay.
And nobody makes a motion at this point, then it dies.
Okay.
And it doesn't come back on your next agenda.
Correct. So does anyone want to make a motion to adopt this resolution? Seeing none, we'll move on on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is 15A, new business, consideration and action on a resolution setting the dates, times and places of the public hearing, the annual town meeting and the adjourned annual town meeting machine vote on a 2023 to 2024 budget ordinance. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Mr. Wood. Ms. Claudia, if you could go over this.
Yes, so this is the annual resolution that you do, setting the dates for the public hearing. And really, it's the, setting the public hearing and the machine vote. We incorporate the annual town meeting as part of that, just that way we have the full dates put out. But the public hearing by charter is required to be held no later than the 15th of April. Typically, that town public hearing for the budget is held on the second Thursday in April. That's historically when we have held it. So this follows that same historic, historical pattern of Thursday, April 13th, 7:00 PM at the high school. The annual town meeting by charter is the first Monday in May, so that'll be May 1st. Again, at the, at the high school in the auditorium. The adjourned town meeting, all-day machine vote is followed the subsequent Tuesday, the week after, the week after the annual town meeting. So that'll be Tuesday, May 9th. And that's at both polling locations for the full duration of polling times from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at both the central office and at the high school. So this is following the same format of all of our historical timeframes for budgetary votes. And we have gotten approvals for all, all three dates for all of the facilities.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on on the agenda. Next item up is 15B, consideration and action on a resolution to authorize the execution of an operating agreement regarding operating costs of the Killingley Stewardage Treatment Plant and other joint services between the Town of Brooklyn and the Town of Killingley. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make the motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Kertula. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. Ms. Claudia, if you could go over this one.
Sure. So the Town of Killingley, we, our wastewater treatment plant accepts the Brooklyn wastewater discharge. We've had a longstanding contract with Brooklyn. And it outlines the billing processes and reporting processes under that operating agreement. That operating agreement expired in December. The parties have been in negotiation on that. They, the final contract was presented to the Killingley WPCA at their January 18th meeting and they have recommended this agreement to you for approval. Essentially, really, the primary changes within the agreement is there's a slight increase in average daily flow capacity that we have kind of increased that top number from .30 to .36 MGD for there. And that's just recognizing analytically kind of where they're, where they're at with a little bit of buffer room for any potential increase. The other more significant increase that we may, or change that we have done to the agreement is prior, they had to notify us for any new commercial or industrial wastewater discharge sources. Under this agreement, they'll have to notify us for any new discharge, wastewater discharge. And that'll give us a better handle on, you know, any new adds to the system. And, you know, any additional development that may come through. So those are really the two main differences. Again, they pay based off of their flows that come to our plant. So it's all based on their actual flows. We have that metered. That has overall gone very well. They participate in all of the expenses within our budget. So they pay their share in accordance with the flow compared to the overall plant. It has been, this contract has been reviewed by legal and has approved it as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
And I did forget to mention it is a five-year agreement.
Thank you.
Now, if, if we're looking at doing the upgrade for capacity at the sewer plant, does that show up if we're spending money to upgrade the capacity?
So they participate in the capital investments.
Okay.
They do. They also participate in any debt service that we issue. So those all get factored within their contract. And as you, well, as you're aware, typically, a wastewater facility upgrade is likely longer than a five-year time span to get that kicked off. So this would go back through negotiation again before we even get close to that timeframe. So I think that we have more than substantial time for that conversation if there need to be an additional revision to this. But I will say, they participated already within our current facility upgrade based on the current language. So it would, it would follow the same process for any additional upgrade. They're participating in the costs of the existing facility upgrade that we just went through.
And how is the, are the payments on a regular basis? There were times when things were not quite?
Yeah, no, we've actually had a, we've had a pretty good consistency with Brooklyn. So we send out an estimate, we send out the estimated billing about the beginning, about the beginning of the year, middle of the year. We do a true-up on that. This agreement outlines the timeline for that billing. So we have specific timeline parameters within that billing. And we've been, both sides have been very adherent to that. And we have a true-up after the audit is completed that we do with them.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on on the agenda. Next item up is item 15C, consideration and action on a resolution of authorizing the town manager to execute and implement an affirmative action policy statement. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
Can I make a-
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to include 15C, D, E, F, G, H and I as one.
You beat me to it.
Second that motion.
So we have a motion to adopt items 15C, D, E, F, G, H and I. And was there a second on that?
Yeah, Kevin.
All right. So motion was made by Mr.-
I don't know, there's like a lot of seconds that just went.
Seconded by Mr. Kertula. Discussion, Ms. Claudia, if you could go over this.
So this is annually come before the town council. These are all re, these are reaffirmations of existing policies that the town has. The reason they come before you annually is it's part of a grant process that we have to have the council re-certify, reaffirm all of these policies. But they've been longstanding policies, most of them. Even if you didn't reaffirm them, we would still have to abide by them anyway because they are required by federal or state law regardless. But either way, we largely, this, this process right here is largely related to our Small Cities Grant Program, which does a lot of housing rehabilitation programs as well as we're recipient of funding, a little over $800,000 right now for the renovations to the domestic violence shelter locally. And that program, Small Cities Grant Program and Housing Program has brought in a substantial amount of grant funding to low-income individuals to do substantial improvements to their properties. So that's why it's before you, all of them.
Thank you. Discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on on the agenda. Next item up is 16, council member reports and comments. Mr. Grandowski, would you like to start?
Donna Brownwell presented everything that I was going to say tonight, so, early on. So we, we got that over in the beginning of the meeting. And the sewer authority, Michelle will handle that.
Well, the beginning of the meeting was a long time ago. You want to just give us a reminder? Mr. Whitehead?
So the Solid Waste Committee vet and Dave had notified us and that we knew anyway that Casella, Casella's contract is up for renewal. And he's, what, he's in negotiations still, hopefully negotiating or?
Yeah, so he sent, he has sent a request to Casella for getting to the negotiating table to look at what a renewal of that contract would look, look like. We haven't received a response yet from Casella. So he is still pursuing them on getting what a renewal might look like for that to bring back to the Solid Waste Subcommittee for consideration.
And we discussed as, as every meeting that, you know, it's just, it's getting harder and harder to, to get rid of the waste. And it's, it's an issue, it's going to be a costly issue coming up. And I'm not sure how, how that's all going to work. Hannah?
Just got one question. I know there, there had been a discussion previously in regards to a facility to bring food waste to. Has there been any further discussion on that?
David mentioned that and he is looking into that, so.
But in the permitting process is, that's big, where do you put it? I mean, I think we'd get, where, where would we, where would we do it? There'd be an uproar about-
So like a gigantic compost?
You know, it'd be nice to have, but-
An aerobic digester. So it's not compost, it's not a compost pile. It's an anaerobic digesting facility. But again, it's still something that you have to, not only do you have to have the facility, but you also have to have enough food waste to feed it. And you have to be able to get that food waste transported in enough timely manner, depending on what you're utilizing that anaerobic digester for. So it can be used to create power. It can also be used to create other products that the food, that, that food can be processed into other products, right? But that, that would depend on what transportation system is available in the area to transport that food waste. So there's a lot of focus on trying to hit high food production waste areas to be able to feed anaerobic digestion.
Transportation is everything.
And the location would have to be on a municipal sewer line.
I got one other thing. When does the public safety meet?
We don't have a public safety meeting at this point in time because we only have one member. Everyone else had resigned, resigned off of the Public Safety Commission. So we don't have, we've been advertising for that committee now for quite some time and we haven't had any interest at this point in new members. I haven't actually touched base with the one member that we still have on there to make sure that he's still knows he's a member.
You would think that'd be a popular-
You would think, but I, so I think what it, largely what that is, is that that is an advisory committee. And so by the ordinance in which it's created, it is an advisory committee and it's a project-based committee. So that is not one that necessarily oversees like the law, like our police department or our fire departments or- or our fire departments or our ambulance company. It doesn't oversee any of those or our fire or our building departments. It doesn't oversee any of those. All it, it's a, it's a project base. So, it's, if the town council has a project, and I can see where, when we get to the place where we want to evaluate the next steps for the constabulary, potentially, that's the committee that starts that process of evaluating, because that's the committee that evaluated it or started the evaluation of that years back, right? So, that might be the committee that the town council says, we need to re-engage the Public Safety Committee to evaluate what is really the next steps for our constabulary moving forward, right? The last few years, because there really hasn't been significant public safety projects, I think it's just kind of lost interest, right? Because there really hasn't been a lot of real, you know, driving projects on, on that front. So, it's really project-based. I think there's some, initially, when people think Public Safety Committee, they think, oh, well, we're gonna oversee the police department like a, like a police commission or we're gonna oversee. And there was some of that when we first, when I first got back here. Some of the Public Safety Commission members really felt that the fire departments and the police reported to them. They did. They thought the police and the fire and the fire marshal reported to them. And they were really upset that those entities were not showing up at those meetings. And so, I had to come back with them and go over what their charge ordinance was and have them really kind of walk through what this really, what, what were they really charged with? And a lot of that, I think, really dealt with the project around the law enforcement component and, and how in-depth that was and the length of time that took. When people sit on a committee for a long period of time and they, the, the perception of what their tasks are can sometimes get distorted over time, right? And so, they really felt that those entities reported to them. And that, that was a little challenging for, for that group. So, trying to make sure that we, you know, collectively understood what that was. But again, we just didn't really, the Public Safety Committee, we just really haven't had a lot of real projects to give to them from a public safety standpoint. And I, again, I see as we come down the pike, as we're starting to come into hiring, getting to that threshold of ten officers, which was what the original benchmark was, as we get to that original benchmark, then it's gonna be, what's the next steps? Where do we go? I think that's, that's clearly a Public Safety Committee project that the town council may assign to them. And that's where I think we might be able to get re-engagement with that group.
One of the projects that, when I was on Public Safety before I ran for council, was a child seat safety clinic, which was something I really wanted to see go forward. It was something they had started continuing with after I stepped down for Public Safety when I got elected to the council. And unfortunately, it was just something that was around a timeframe when everybody started resigning, wasn't much longer after that.
Yeah.
And I will admit, I mean, a lot of, when I was on a Public Safety Committee, a lot of our direction came from our previous town manager. And then, when Ms. Claudio came on board and addressed the fact that this is what the ordinance authorizes them to do, I realized that half of the stuff we were told we were doing isn't in the ordinance. So, I mean, it's.
Yeah, and with regards to the child safety seat, I have brought that up to our law enforcement. So, that is a program that they are looking into to see if that's something that they can re-establish. And that would make sense for them to establish something along those lines. So, our law enforcement is looking at that to see if they can re-engage in some community outreach program around child safety seats. Not necessarily, you know, a lot of them have gone away from physically showing parents how to install safety seats because there's so many different types of safety seats and they all have different instructions. And parents pop them out all the time and, you know, just because a law, an officer installed it, doesn't mean that the parent didn't pop it out and not reinstall it properly, right? And so, the state P D got away from doing it because of that risk exposure. But, so we, I did talk to my law enforcement office with regards to that. They do want to see if they can develop a program around that that provides some educational opportunities around child seat safety in proper installation, but also in properly putting your child in the safety seat, properly clipping your child actually into the safety seat as well, because they find that there's a lot of kids that are in safety seats, but they're not properly, they're not properly clipped into the safety seat and that causes serious injury as well. So, they kind of want to look at trying to do a twofold educational experience on that.
The other piece too would be making sure you're using the right type of seats.
Correct, for the right age and the right size, weight. Right, all of that. So, yes, but I have brought that to their attention.
Thank you. I know we got sidetracked, but we'll move back on to Ms. Murphy.
I met with Agricultural Commission. They're doing a lot of classes this year, bee class, mushroom class. Early April is when the next green newsletter is coming out. They accepted a resolution to become a pollinator-friendly community. And that was something that Jill wanted. And Dana Hopkins is gonna do another haunted trail on Hidden Hollow Farms this year. If people, he's looking for volunteers, if anybody knows anything about that. Let's see what else. I met with the W P C A and, let's see, H V A C project is open for bid. They're trying to get new system on the roof. Park pump station, they're still waiting on the pumps. Those two pumps need to be replaced, the collection system. North River Lane, to Maple Street Sewer Line, they got all the trees cut down for that. Reynolds Street Project, they're still working on that. Brooklyn Agreement, she spoke about. There was one accidental exceedance mixing up the samples. And they're still having trouble getting their grade four plant superintendent. And so, they're looking at maybe either Joe continuing to take the test or trying to get a waiver from the state. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
So, I did attend the N E C O G meeting as well. Obviously, we heard a lot about the N D D H. I will say that I did, I've reached out to Representative Dolphines and her and Senator Summers are really on this as well to hopefully change some of the legislation so that way their towns aren't, if you will, surprised by the fact that we actually have to opt out by January first. It'll give us hopefully a, a better option, but of course, that goes through the legislature. And just as an aside for everybody as, as well, we didn't find out about any of this rate increase until last month, this, this month, last month meeting. So, it's not like we had a choice of, or a chance to even discuss this prior to now. So, just to add a little bit more to that. And also on the public safety end, I know I, I think I brought it up now twice in our goal-setting session, I really want to see that whole committee revisioned and possible charter change on how we do it, but that, that's.
So, it's now an ordinance. So, that would be an ordinance subcommittee.
Yes, ordinance.
And we have one of those next week.
Mr. Kertula?
I attended Solid Waste. Mr. Whitehead had gone over what we discussed there and Permanent Building Committee. They went over the bids that were opened on the specific things that they do for the construction thing, this is all separated out with sheet rock, electric, glass, and plumbing. They went over the bids that were open. Some of them, they'd only received one bid. I think they were sending them back out for another bid and trying to break them up into more smaller items so they get more interest in bids. And an overview of the budget where they're still projecting it to be under budget.
Really good to hear. I attended the Housing Authority meeting. They elected their officers, they approved their audit, and they submitted an application for critical needs funding for C O two and smoke detectors at Maple Courts Two for forty-three different units. The units were put in in twenty sixteen and they had a seven-year shelf life. So, they're realizing that they have to replace them now. And the total cost on that would have been fourteen thousand to replace that. And they set their meeting dates and their holiday schedule. And that's all I have.
I went to Board of Ed last week, but Kyle reported for me, so, thank you.
Ms. White?
So, the Rec Commission meeting was supposed to be the end of January. However, we had a little ice winter thing that got it canceled. So, they actually met last night. A lot of good things were happening. The, they actually have drafted a refund policy that actually came out of a situation with the youth hoop at the beginning of the season. So, because they actually didn't have a refund policy. So, there is one for programs and for trips. And they actually have also put in there where they would give credit rather than giving them the money back. Because there was actually quite, quite the uproar around the, the whole beginning of the youth hoop program. Bucky went over all the Owen Bell projects. He went over the fact, red, white, and blue is actually June thirtieth. I meant to send you a message, right? With the rain date of the, of the seventh. And after the, K B A is actually gonna do their second Saturday at Owen Bell as part of Run for Ryan, or kind of in, in coordination with. And following that, that's when the proposed dredging is supposed to. The, the actual pond will be increased in width and around the edges as well as depth. He also went over the splash pads and also the, the proposed pavilion that'll be over by Ra-Ras, which, you know, all, all of, I mean, it's, it's terr, it's not great that we're gonna lose the soccer field or the, or the running trails in the back for the fall, but I think it'll, it's gotta be done. And the track's gonna eventually have to be ripped up anyway, so it's a perfect place to kind of let that stuff water out. And, because the track is the next thing on the, on the hip parade, because that's degraded quite a bit. So, things are moving. They're actually talking about replacing some of the swings. They actually have, they, he's pretty sure he has enough funds to be able to replace those because they're in need of being replaced. The spring programs are off and running. Suzanne Easterly had her soup and story. There was spaces for thirty-six people and it was packed out again. It's one of their, their big things in conjunction with public safety. One of our newer members that we placed is, was big into biking. And so, in coordination with our Killenley officers, we're gonna have a first annual inaugural bike rodeo. Winchester, the, the company Winchester actually donated two bikes and they're looking for, get other donations from another local, larger retailer in the, in the region. But they're looking to do a lot of skills stuff and be able to give kids a lot of good stuff. On, on a personal, on April vacation, they're actually, we'll have a day-to-day sign-up of activities Friday. In particular, of April vacation, there's actually a movie and pizza for the kids, reasonable fees for every day. The drumming circles have been going really, really well. They talked about the Jelly Bean Trail, which of course is, of course, the same day as our inaugural budget meeting, April Fool's Day. It'll be open to Killenley residents. And on a personal, personal note, my great nephew went, is in kindergarten at K C S and they took a field trip. And they actually set up workstations to tour the whole theater and took him around the stage and looked at the sound and the costuming area. And they all got, went home with a little goodie bag and one free ticket for a child if they come with a parent for the Frozen Junior performance in April. My great nephew was so excited, he couldn't wait to go. He thought it was this, that weekend. And my mom was very, had to break the terrible news that he's gonna have to wait till April. But the funny, the funny story that goes with, oh, and what's even cooler is in February, there actually, there's a school in Providence of third and fourth graders that are gonna basically do what the kindergartners did and tour the local theater. And we're actually, with the discussion actually went into when we get into the new Westfield Ave, how much bigger and that program could actually, you know, to inspire interest in, in the arts. But when, when Dustin got, got home and he showed that he went to the theater, so my mom looked at, oh, so you went to the theater? He goes, no, Grandma, it's the theater. So, but, so, my, that little generational, but, so he, so it's super, it's, it's something they're actually looking forward to. Actually, some of our newer members, one of the newer members that we actually brought on had, came up with this idea to invite the kids in. She also was the one that sponsored the Cupidograms, which they thought wasn't gonna go over real well. They actually had to get more people in to do, to where they actually had people going out to sing Cupidograms today. They actually ended up with thirty people going out to sing Cupidograms. So, I mean, the sky's the limit. I mean, we could invite the whole Killenley chorus to go, go around and serenade people in the area, but, so.
Thank you. Ms. Barca?
So, I had Planning and Zoning and Housing Authority, both of the meetings were on the same day, so Jason attended. So, next Tuesday, I also have two meetings at the same time.
You picked the right ones, right?
There was no, there were no public hearings, so it was just a workshop, looking at use tables and potentially combining three districts' business park, like industrial and professional business park into one district, which would eliminate the minimum of seventy-five acres applying to the district. This would be more in line with the rest of the zones within the community. They were also trying to define things that happen in enclosed structures. Can they happen outside in business areas, like loading and unloading may occur in parking lots? Can light fleet maintenance be done outside, refueling, defining a right-of-way so they don't create landlocked parcels? So, this was just a draft, a legal, it'll go to legal before it goes to public hearing. They want to make sure, are there anything industrial park that applies to business parks so there won't be any overlaps? Trying to, should they define what a game preserve is? Because many of the zones say that you have to be a specific distance from a game preserve, so they wanted to define what it is. Also defining the difference between a warehouse and a distribution center. And these are all up for final review in February.
I just got one question. Talking about doing the, the maintenance outdoors and the refueling, are they looking into making sure whatever containment areas are necessary from D E P for doing anything like that?
So, that wasn't brought to discussion, but they're, they were saying that many, many of the businesses do that inside, but if there was a business, would they be able to do that? You know, refueling, that would be, well, that would be fuel pumps, like, so they didn't discuss anything, any containment areas around that?
That would be my question, if they have anything that needs to be in a containment area, if they're doing it outside, how, how would they contain any kind to spill?
Okay, I'll bring that up to them.
Anything further? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on in the agenda, next item up, seventeen A, executive session. We have nothing. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Grandowski. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.